We ready?
Yes.
We're ready. Okay, let me make sure everything is on. Welcome to the Town of Lake Clark Shores Town Council Meeting, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gregory Freebold.
Yep.
Vice Mayor John Maples.
Here.
President Pro Tem Bridget Keating. Councilmember Taylor Materio.
Here.
Councilmember Kristi Mossbach.
Should be coming along shortly. Okay, we do not have anyone for a moment of silence, thankfully. But I do have a request that you keep resident in our prayers. Gabriel Asassi, who that family is building a new house right there, on Christmas morning, had to be rushed at a hospital and had to have emergency quadruple bypass surgery. It's a terrible thing. So Pastor, if you'll please come up.
Our Father in Heaven, I come to you tonight, and I thank you for the opportunity and the privilege to be here tonight to pray. Lord, I, I think about a new year. We get to start a new year, Lord, and so we thank you for this meeting tonight. I thank you for the last year, Lord, two thousand and twenty-four. Lord, there was this group of fine people up there tonight. These men and women make up this board. They, they work together so well. They accomplish so much, and we thank you for it. Now, Lord, we enter this new year, and there's much more to be accomplished, much more to do, much more work to be done. So, Lord, tonight, we get to ask you to help us. We turn to you, Lord, and ask for your guidance and your direction and your wisdom. So, Lord, be with the dear people tonight. Ask for patience. So we thank you for that. Lord, when I have a church business meeting, and I always pray it would be a sweet meeting. May it be a sweet meeting tonight. Or if there's somebody that disagrees, may they disagree in a sweet spirit. Lord, I found out that people come, they got good opinions, they got good ideas, they got good visions. Sometimes it's better than my own. That's where we stop. And we listen. And we put it all together and come out with the best solution possible. Lord, that's what we want to do tonight, just put it all together, have the best solution possible for our city, for our town, for our people. And, Lord, I just pray for that tonight. God, I pray for those dear people in California. Lord, I pray tonight, Lord, that you be merciful to them. There'll be no more loss of life, no more loss of homes. Be merciful to them. But, Lord, one thing about the fires out there, they show us how important our first responders are and our police department. So I pray for ours tonight. I pray for Brother, for Chief Smith. Pray for him and all of his officers tonight, that you keep them safe. May they feel so appreciated. We thank you for what they do. They lay their life on the line. God bless them tonight. Lord, be with that dear person that's had their quadruple. Oh, you're the, you're the great physician. You're the healer. So, Lord, we turn to you tonight and ask that you be gracious and kind and bring that person back to good health. We pray it all now in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, before we do audience comments, we are going to bring up Chief Duffy. He is actually on duty and he is filling in, so we're going to let him give us a report quickly on calls and things of that nature. Good evening.
Thanks, Chief, for coming.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Duffy. I am the B shift Battalion Chief for Battalion Ten Palmish Twenty-Five Rescue. Battalion Ten is the battalion that handles the emergencies for the municipality of Lake Clark Shores. And Chief Ron Martinez asked me to come and give you a report of a call volume for the month of December. For the month of December, we had a total of twenty-one calls for the Town of Lake Clark Shores, which the dispatch time was forty-four seconds. The turnout time, the, the time from the units to go responding was forty-five seconds. The travel time from the units to, to arrive at the address of the emergency was six minutes and four seconds, which with a total of response times of seven minutes and thirty-three seconds. Out of the twenty-one emergencies, the Palmish Twenty-Five Rescue ran in the town of Lake Clark Shores, fourteen of them were medical emergencies. Four of them were fire alarms. Two of them were hazardous situations, which could be a fire or chemical spills, such a things. And only one of them was a vehicle accident. And that's it for the report for the month of December. If you like, I can leave the copy of, with the numbers.
Um, I believe.
We have a copy.
You have a copy? Yes. Okay. Was there any questions for Chief Duffy?
No.
No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Have a good evening.
Be safe, Chief.
Okay. Now we'll move on to audience comments. Tim, fill out a card. You want to come on up?
Thank you. Tim Doddtree, fourteen-ten Keller Road. Uh, first item I want to bring up is spending. The last meeting, we approved an additional hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in spending. Part of it for the bridge, part of it for a new hiry of the town. And I've noticed that we have hired a, a number of additional employees in the time since. And I've mentioned this before, and I'll mention it again. We need to watch our spend. We need to watch our spending. We need to watch our spending. And all I'm, all I got to say about that is just stop. We have expenditures specifically with infrastructure we have to do in town. And it becomes more and more of a problem with us to get this, these infrastructure things done. If we could continue to hire and we continue to spend. We're a town of fifteen-hundred houses. We should be treating it as such. And going from that, I'll go to the roads, specifically the roads on the east side of town. We need to move forward with repaving. We need to do it now. Okay? Pine Tree is shut, Pine Tree Bridge is shut down now. There's less traffic coming down that road now. Now would be a good time to do the resurfacing. Okay, less traffic, less disruption to the people of our town. I understand there's logistical reasons you might want to do it separately, but I think we need to move forward with it. I think we need to move forward with it properly. And all we have to do is look at Sixth Avenue and seeing what it did with their bridge reconstruction, plus the road improvements being done to the east side of the bridge going underneath ninety-five. It's led to a disaster, a disaster of major proportions that's gone on and on and on and on. And all I'm trying to say is we need to compress things so there's less disruption to the people in our town. And then I want to talk about the tree, the Christmas tree. And we have to retire, okay? It's been subject to a number of issues this Christmas season. It was not protected by GFI protection for a significant portion of the season. The fact is, trees with lights or any type of exterior lights, specifically LED lights, are continuing issues with GFI circuits. This has gotten old enough that it's just, it's, it's, it's time to retire. It is time to retire. I mean, right now, if you lit it up, you would see there's a big blank four-foot square spot in the front, and there's some off the side that don't even work. So it's, it's gone. It's time to put it to bed. Okay? And going along with this is, we used to have a live Christmas tree. We used to have it in a different location. This tree is memorializes Jim and Judy Tackett. Jim had a real interest in there being a live tree and a live tree every year. That allows us to put lights on the tree and retire them on, in a prompt fashion after a year or two. Most of the people who do holiday lights and do it ongoing, they retire the lights every single year. So we don't have the problems with the GFI and the lights going out and things like that. It's just the right way to do it. And something we used to always do, we used to always allow the smaller residents of our town to help decorate the lower portions of the tree. Especially, was specifically on the night that the tree was originally lit up, okay? I'd like us to go back to that and have maybe them be able to make handmade ornaments and hang them on the lower branches of the tree that night. I thought that'd be a good thing to bring back. And going back to the fact that it memorializes Jim and Judy. His rock and her rock is back in the old location where the tree used to be. Okay? If we're going to continue to keep the tree where it is now, we need to move that rock from where it was, where it is now, to where, I guess, our new location is for our Christmas tree. Because this does memorialize them, and for them to be, have the rock hidden up inside the bushes, not in the location where the Christmas tree is, is inappropriate. And I think we need to take care of it, too. I mean, I've been up there. I've looked at it, and it needs to be cleaned up and dressed up a little bit. You know, pressure washed, cleaned up, whatever. Move back into the location where we're going to have, maybe that will be our, our time that we're going to put our Christmas tree in that location. We can put the rock down there. We can put, and we can also put a small light on it to show people that that is for them. Okay? They're important members of this town. It'd be really nice to be able to do that in the holiday season, to recognize the part they played in our town and the part they played in our Christmas tree and the Christmas tree lighting. And then I'd like to mention something else. We still have the tree up. When's it going to be taken down? So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Do we have any other audience comments? Yes, sir. Come on up.
I know it was a year or two you guys resolved. Oh, sorry. My name is Chrisanne Belly, seven-zero-three-one Venetian Way. About fences, they need to go to six feet. There's a house across the street from me. I can't give you the house number because it doesn't have any. But it looks like a junkyard. If I was to put my house on the market, I'd be suing them for losing my value. Because I would not want to drive in the neighborhood and see that house. It has an old beat-up rusted car on the front. You look on the side, there's boards, there's this. And from my understanding, from the side neighbors, the backyard's even worse with their, looks like a boating yard.
He's been, he's been cited and by the South Florida Water Management District also.
I, I know all that, but they need a fence. Fences and doors make for great neighbors.
I agree.
If you're a hoarder, keep it behind your walls.
Yeah.
I don't want to see it. And they've had it on too long. In fact, I'll give it another thirty days, and I'm going to, I already talked to a lot of my neighbors. I'll get a bunch of signatures and would hand it to them. Fix it, get a fence. Or make your life miserable.
Sure. I, I understand.
And then Dana, thank you. She's going to repost. We don't have too many. People know the ways to walk or ride a bike or anything in this neighborhood, in which direction you should do and not wear black at night.
Correct.
Okay, there's a lovely little family with a baby and a stroller, wearing black and a black stroller. You're roadkill. I won't feel sorry for you.
Yeah.
Maybe a flashing light on the street besides a notice because I think they need to be hitting the head with it. And now I tell them, when I drive past, you're on the wrong side.
Right.
You're wearing black. Roadkill. Lady on the way here, by your house, I think. Little dogs, one's almost in the middle of the road, and she's walking in the wrong direction. That dog's a roadkill. I will not feel sorry for it. That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you.
But that house has to go.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other audience comments? Yes, come right up. How are you?
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is.
Louise, pull that, pull that down to you.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
There you go. Louise Bing, B-I-N-G. It's seven-four-oh-one West Lake Drive. And I just had some thoughts this afternoon about our dogs. And we have so many in Lake Clark Shores and so many people who are walking them. And I want to point out some things that people who are driving through Lake Clark Shores would see, and we want it to look nice. When I walk my dog, I cannot tell you how often I see these graping piles of poop right on the swale. And somebody's going to step in them, and even if they don't, they look terrible. And it's so easy just to bring a bag with you or some paper and something to not let the dog and cover it up or cover it up or just somehow not leave it there for someone to step in. And that's even little dogs. Because if you've got it on the bottom of your shoe, you're going to bring it home, and it's going to cause a problem. So that's one thing that I think is very important that we do to look good as a society, as a community. The other thing that I'm concerned about is one gentleman who has taken it in his, I think he thinks it's funny, but he ties the dog to the handlebar or to the puddle, or he just, pedal, or just holds it. And I don't know how many of you have maybe has seen him, and this is so dangerous, so bad for the dog, and really, really has to be stopped. When I lived in Fort Lauderdale, we had someone who tried that. And they would go up and down and smiling, and sometimes the people would come out of their houses and yell at him, "Stop, stop," and he thought it was funny. And that's what this man is doing. If I had called out to him, "Please, your pet, your pet veterinarian," he just laughs and keeps going. What happened in Fort Lauderdale was that the man fell over one day, killed the dog. And I don't know what he did to himself, but it was, it was what we had been begging him to do for a long time, and this is what can happen. It's a dangerous thing. Those are the two important things I wanted to mention, but just very quickly, I'd like to say that when we walk our dogs, we really need to realize that for some of them, this is the only time in the whole day that's theirs. And it's so important to the dog that we're not dragging him along as we're jogging or dragging him along with fast walking and not thinking of the fact that for the dog, he wants to go slow, he wants to stop and sniff at what's around. It takes his time. This is his only time of the day that he's able to do what he wants. And I hope that when you're walking your dog, you'll think of that and maybe stop with the jogging and the walking when you want to have your dog for a walk, let him do it. And that's all. And thank you.
Thank you, Louise.
Thank you, Louise. Any other audience comments? No? We have anything emailed in or written?
Yes, there's Jennifer Chenowski. Just one moment. Jennifer, you can go ahead and speak. Jennifer, you're self-muted.
Hi. Hi, Jennifer Chenowski, seventy-one-thirty Pine Tree Lane.
Can you hear her?
Very good.
I don't know. Robert, can you turn up the volume maybe?
Is that, is that any better?
She just left the meeting.
No.
She just left the meeting, so.
Gone? Okay. Anyone else before we move on? Good evening, Kristy. We're glad you're safe. It's treacherous out there. We'll give you a minute. We'll give you a minute to get situated.
Work took over today.
I understand. She, she can circle back if, if she comes back, just let me know. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll entertain approval of the agenda, motion?
Motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I. Motion for consent?
Motion, so move.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have no presentations, no quasi-judicial proceedings, no public hearing. We're going to move to unfinished business. And we are going to talk about approval of proposal from Elliot Cohen, media consultant, my PR guru for town branding slash tagline. Joe, I'll let you take it.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we've been talking about this for several months, back in September. The mayor brought to us, we should possibly think of a tagline or maybe some branding initiative. So after much discussion, we, we talked about bringing in a media expert in. We brought in Elliot Cohen back in November, and he said that we can go through a branding action plan and look at a vision, goals, tagline. We talked about the CRA. So we asked him to do a proposal, and what you have before you tonight is a proposal of twenty-four thousand dollars to do a branding action plan for the town. We came up with five options for the council to consider. The first option is to approve or eject this, reject this proposal as is. The second one is to direct staff to negotiate with the scope of work and the costs with Elliot's firm. I've already done that. I asked him to come down to a lower price. We, we negotiated down to twenty-four, twenty thousand instead of twenty-four thousand. And we also brought down the hourly rate from a hundred and fifty to one-twenty-five. And I also, since he's going to be going through the same stakeholders and the same interviews with our residents to include the CRA, and he agreed with that, too. So the three changes to his change, to his proposal, is that he would include the CRA and reduce the price from twenty-four thousand to twenty thousand. The next option for you all to consider is to, is to direct staff to get other quotes from other vendors. The fourth option is for us to look at staff doing an in-house branding or tagline. We don't have much experience, but we would do our best. And then the fifth option is just leave the branding as it is. We, you know, we have a good foundation already. We can always build on that, but we have a great logo. You know, we're known as a boating community, as a boat, a bird sanctuary. We have an egret on our, our logo, so we, you should consider that option, too. Obviously, the last one is, the whole twenty thousand dollars does not have to be paid through a general fund or taxpayers' money because the CRA can fund some of this. We would have to look at the, the bills, and I would have to get with Charlie on what is allowed. But if it's advertising or promotion for the CRA, the CRA, you know, we can always advertise the corridor as being five minutes from the airport. I always say that, anybody looking into a corporate headquarters in town, we're five minutes from an international airport, less than five minutes, actually. So that, so some of this doesn't have to be tax dollars. It could be funded partially with the CRA funds. So please discuss the five options and direct staff which way you'd like to go.
Elliot is our current communications vendor. Are, we have a month, okay?
Yes.
So I just wanted to bring up something that you and I talked about, Joe, which was that my most common, well, the two things I hear most about besides the bridge from neighbors is a lack of communication. And I know that we do all these different communication tactics, but we still have quite a few neighbors who feel that they're not receiving the communications and the updates that they think they should be receiving. You mentioned to me that they always have access to us and you. My response was, I don't think that's an action plan that we really, before spending additional money with this vendor, really need to be looking at what they're currently doing for us and if they're being successful. So I wanted to just put that out there for discussion. And I'm going to also say that while we have unpaved streets, I would have a really hard time approving additional money being spent on this at this time. I think it's a wonderful idea for us for the future, but I don't want our slogan to be the town of unpaved streets. And I think that's a really valid thing that we should be spending money on right now, so those are my two.
That's like worst tagline. You've been over there, and I know you have. Good job.
I did, Joe.
So the, those are my discussion points for this, this item.
I actually concur with Taylor. I was thinking it doesn't look good for us to be spending money on icing when we, we, not even the cake. We, we still have meat and potatoes to take care of, meaning the paved, the, the streets. So while I'm sure this has value, I do wonder how much value it has on the residential side. I don't think a branding effort is going to increase the homes, the prices of homes that are on the market. Or I, it might have some value for the CRA. And I asked Joe earlier today if we had a mission statement for the town, and he said he didn't think we did. So there's, there's some things that, that could take place, but I think that we need to take care of meat and potatoes before we move to dessert.
You got it, Bridget.
Some of the things I concur. I think part of my, my understanding is part of this whole, I'm sorry. Part of this whole process is coming up with a mission statement beside the branding, rebranding. I do think we need to take care of the paving, and I think I spoke with Joe today, and I think we are, we're coming up with a plan. I now understand that things don't happen in a vacuum, and it's, and people may not want to hear that, but there is a plan being worked on. We talked about more even about whether there are speed bumps, not speed bumps, signage, speed limit signs. There's a lot of things that go along with the paving. So I think we are working on that. Maybe we need to put, push this maybe to another meeting, maybe in the next CRA meeting, so two months from now. Let us digest this, and maybe the communication director can come up, maybe have form with the residents to see what they are looking for in communications, whether it's a text blast or whether it's some kind of more formal communication process for them to get them the information that they feel they're not getting. You know, we, all we can do is ask because we, we, we think we're doing enough, but obviously we're not. So I think we, we need to work on a plan to communicate better with the residents.
You got it.
Um, first, thank you, Taylor, for bringing that up. I think you make a valid point. Joe, I'd like to know if, as Bridget said, can we push this off and see how much of this we can maybe dovetail with the CRA? Because to Kristy's point, it would benefit the CRA corridor tremendously versus just the residents. And so maybe seeing what this can, we can kind of roll this through the CRA, but I think they make a valid point of figuring out how we can get these roads paved before we start spending a whole lot of money on a bunch of other things. I think the meat and potatoes example was great. So I'm, I concur with the, the council. I think it's important that we do take care of some of these other things. But also, I like the idea of figuring out what kind of medium of communication does our residents in our town, being age and demographic, what's the best way to communicate with them? Is it this newsletter that goes out in the mail? Is it reading the paper? Is it an email? Is it a text message? I mean, I don't, I don't know. I know there's a lot of things in the past that we did at one point to communicate with residents that were helpful and that we stopped doing them, some of the because of cost, some of it just because of resources and time. But I'd like to figure that out and see if, you know, what's the best method to communicate, especially in times of emergencies or things are happening and we need help or whatever the case may be. So, Joe, I don't know if that's something that we can look into as a direction from the council, but it sounds like the team is looking for a solution for communicating with the residents. Thank you.
Okay, my turn. Discuss goals and objectives. We've been discussing those for twenty years. We have our new team here from Coolier and Hearing. They're master planners. My feeling is, is to drive and keep the taxes at an acceptable level in this town. We need that corridor. Things aren't going to be going down. We've all just been having discussions up here of the prices of property. I don't think the roads are as important as the water. I don't know if you all have been out on the water yet, but it's terribly disgusting. It stinks to high heaven. It's been let go. It's not our fault. It's a wide variety of things. So I can see, sitting back and looking and evaluating this, we don't have to move on this today. But if we're going to make the most out of what most communities don't get, which is the CRA, we have to have a game plan. We have to be able to go out there and approach businesses and tell them why. I personally don't even see a lot of the businesses there right at the moment giving up their land. A lot of these people have been here forever. A lot of these people have been here forever. They're cash cows. They own the property. They're just collecting the money. So I, Joe, help me with this whole communication thing because we have, we, the town crier, by the way, I guess you all got your notice there, 102 years they're done. You see that, right? That was one of the ways and that wasn't even Lake Clark Shores, really mostly Lake Worth and Palm Springs and Green Acres got all the ink in that. We still do a newsletter, right?
We do a monthly electronic, it's called the buzz, and then we do a quarterly shoreline newsletter that's mailed out.
That's quarterly.
That's correct.
And then where else?
Semi annually.
Where else is there information? So when the folks out there are saying they're not getting or receiving information, what, what are they telling you?
So for example, as a new resident here, I never once received the buzz until I became a town council member and went to Joe and said, how do I get that, that you keep talking about up here? So am I, as a new resident, supposed to do that outreach and say, sign me up? That feels like the backwards approach to be getting information to the residents. We deserve to know what's happening, especially when we're the ones voting on it. So that was one of the examples that I gave to Joe.
Mary, or do we, we have a place there to sign up with your email address at every barbecue, correct? Or at most events that we do, don't we have a place for people to sign up with their email?
They can at the town table at the barbecue.
I, I don't know how it fell onto me, but I, over my years here have been looking in on a lot of the elderly and they always seem to be women. Men won't accept the help. They're just too proud. They won't take it. And most of them did not have computers. Mrs. Brunson didn't have a, she had the same old landline, little push button thing that she had for 100 years. She had no cell phone, no computer. She, she liked that, the newsletter. So, I mean, I can see that, but I don't, you know, I get out there and we, when we go to these meetings, all these things that we have at these meetings, we go out to our district meetings and I start asking all of these other communities, what are you all doing about this? What are you doing about that? So the branding thing, in my opinion, is, should be considered down the road. I know everybody thinks the roads are so bad, but for a guy who drives through Palm Beach County, like every end of Palm Beach County, our roads are not the greatest, but they definitely are not the worst. And I did start my day off spilling a cup of coffee on my lap today, by the way. But not because of a bump, it's because somebody walking their dog in the street that couldn't see early. Now, that's a true story, early this morning, because that happens. So I just think that the, the branding thing is something that we can sit on. We don't have to spend that money right now, but we need to consider it in the course of your days and talking. Talk to other people. Talk to other people within their community. See what they do. They all, the cities have public information officers. That's basically what he is at the end of the day.
Yes.
He spells out all this stuff that's going on around here. So we need to reflect, absorb it, think about it. We don't have to vote on this today, in my opinion. But we need to figure out what we're going to do with their plan because that's going to be, when you drive through here and you're coming from the east and you're coming there, that's going to be the first thing you see is that master plan in the parks, the bridge and all that kind of stuff. Lake Clark Shores, by the way, and just ask Mr. Shear, does not have a bad reputation out there. It's got an awesome, great reputation. It's not all doom and gloom, like a lot of some of the other communities feel that they have. Yeah. So. Yeah. The, my, my personal opinion is the water is our, our thing. That's our thing. So you want to table this for now?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think, I think it would be a fun thing to have a contest. We don't have, and invite all the residents to submit a tagline. Not, you know, we don't necessarily have to choose. If, if none of them rise to the top, we don't have to choose them. But I, it would be, it would, it could be actually part of step one of what this proposal is, is hearing from, from, from the residents. And we could, you know, get a gift card from Sushi Joe or something for, you know, for the winner.
I, yeah. Absolutely. That can be explored. This is just, this is just the beginning of this process. This process could take a long time. It could take a year, it could take two years, get everything in order. There's a master plan being started, these different items. Remember, a lot of deferred maintenance has gone on in Lake Clark Shore since probably maybe 1970. That's true. So they just never anticipated, which is strictly my opinion, that it was going to be what it is. This was a Western community. There were wells here. There, there wasn't city water. There wasn't anything way back when. So I don't think that they really saw that that's where it's going to be. So we can table this.
I do think that the rebranding and the tagline is very important and it's not, it needs to be held to the top of the food chain, for lack of a better word. However, I do think that part of this whole process is that, I mean, I know you came up with, when new people came in, you wrote, you wrote a letter to the new resident came in. Maybe there needs to be a welcoming package, including that, inviting them to sign up for the buzz line and maybe starting this point forward, go back and maybe cost some money, do a mailer to all the residents about you need to sign up for these lines, whatever. These are things that are available for communication. Then every new person that moves in here at closing, they have informational packet about Lake Clark Shore welcoming here. And this is where, this is the information, how you communicate the buzz line. This is to sign up. So not doing it backwards where the resident has finds out and says, oh, I got, I need to do to sign up for it. As a welcome, part of a welcoming packet.
How did they, how did we arrive at the reverse 911 or 411 or whatever we had called that back then? Remember when there's a state of emergency or there's something that there would be a, you would get a text message, you'd get a phone call. We still do that.
Yes.
So how did, how did we arrive at that?
It's dispatch. It's just.
Well, that was something done through the PD.
Yeah, it's, it's just many cities have it. It's just a normal practice today. We also have alert PBC, which you can, let's say if there's a gas leak in a shopping center, we can, by geo mapping, we can just go around the shopping center to avoid that area. So we even have better tools than reverse 911, but we still use reverse 911.
Right.
But I do believe that the branding and the tagline for all the master plan to go along with the parks, this is all comprehensive and encompassing. So I don't think one, the communication needs to be better, but I don't think that we, you know, we need to think about what's going on today, but not pushing down too far. Mayor alluded to, this has been going on for way too long. We have water issues and we have a lot more, we had a lot of big capital improvement issues on the table that all are included.
And Joe, can we have our communication team come in and give us a presentation on what communication they actually provide to us? Not necessarily, I mean, we can talk costs, I guess, but just what they're providing. Maybe we can make some recommendations as to a welcome packet or some kind of method that we're talking to residents that they would like to have versus what we're currently doing. And then go from there from a price standpoint and cost standpoint to add those potential additional services or means of communication with the residents. Is that, can we have them come and present?
I have no problem with that.
Does that sound fair?
Absolutely.
To us, so then we can go from there.
I think we don't even really know all the spaces as council members up here, which is why we're questioning so much with Joe.
The PR guru is in the budget. The dollars that are spent with him is in your budget. So those dollar numbers.
The monthly, the monthly dollars, not the additional.
It's all going to change. It's not a monthly. It's a yearly expense.
But it's, it's a great, it's a very important thing. So it's a great discussion to have and to review it.
And Elliot will come here.
And he'll come, yeah, even if it's virtual.
Just to clarify that though, this is an additional expense than what was?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Cause I'm.
Yeah, this is not budget.
Come across that way.
Yeah.
And, and last thought, again, I, I agree, this is important. It's something we've been talking about up here on council. I love to see some ideas of how, and then maybe you need to get the Mr. Scheck with this on how to run these costs through the CRA if possible, because I think the majority of the benefit will be to the corridor, will be with the master plan, you know, right off Fort Hill. I think that's going to be our, our best way to kind of navigate this moving forward and then potentially dovetail it from there into something down the road where.
Which will help the residents.
Which will help the residents ultimately, but using the CRA initially as the, as much as we can to kind of do the deal. But.
I agree.
Information on that, that'd be great.
And I agree with both of you, all of you, but we have a CRA meeting tonight and I have an executive comment. So we can, let's continue it there. I think it would be appropriate to discuss it there.
All right. So we don't need to have any.
Do we like the idea of a contest just for a tagline? Just.
Yeah. Yeah. But we'll need time to get that organized and we'll, we'll bring that back. Have them put that on there next week because you're going to have to figure out what you're going to do. So talk to you, you know, talk to your neighbors, talk to the people and see what they're doing. So we'll table that one. Jennifer, I see you made it over. If you want to come on up and have your comments.
Oh, thank you. I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Not sure what was happening on the phone. Knew I'd be late. Hi, Jennifer Chenowski, 7130 Pine Tree Lane. I wanted to first say thank you because at the last meeting, it was Vice Mayor Maples, Councilwoman Mossbach, Montero Keating, who all were like voicing support for the residents to have a vote on septic to sewer. So I very much appreciate that. That falls in line with the petition we had. It was almost 1,000 signatures. It was like well over a year ago, we turned it in and the last council didn't seem to be very interested in seeking that out. So I'm really excited to hear you four are really on board with that. So that's, thank you. Secondly, I think it'd be great if you paved our roads. They are horrible. I'd have to disagree with our mayor, but they are awful, horrendous awful. So hopefully it seems like Taylor and Christie are spearheading that and Mr. Maple seems to be in agreement and that's wonderful. Thank you very much. Also, I think it's a great idea to have a motto contest. That sounds so fun and so great. Not to get like too off topic, but because you guys were talking about it, the, the communication, I feel like if we had, there's a latest news tab on the website. If we utilize that, it could be, everything could be there. I know there are like some older people, you were saying, you call on and visit that wouldn't be able to get that. But maybe you have a signup sheet for people that don't want a digital buzz letter, you know, news feed, whatever that is. And you can just mail it to them or they can, you know, somehow get it, paper, you know, papers always work. And then I also thought that was a great idea, what you were just saying about giving new residence packets. I think that's great, but wouldn't that be something you guys would know because the taxes go up? The taxes like flip over and increase, you know, that house sold. So now the town somewhere knows that that's like, the revenue jumps like $10,000 or whatever crazy amount it is because the house changed hands. So then you guys could give a packet to that house or mail it or whatnot. That's great. But also to revisit something, I think council member Mossbox said a while back, it had to do with the surveys. So not to go too far, but when you guys, recently I had to get a dock and a seawall for my parents. They live in Lake Clark Shores. To get the permit, I needed a dock bulkhead license. It was $650. I could not get that license without a survey that was less than three years old. And that held me up like by the grace of God, you, Joe helped me out. He gave me an exception because you guys are the ones that approved the license. So you can't get the permit without the license, but you gotta pay 650, but you can't pay 650 if you don't have the new survey. And my only thing was, well, as soon as I put in a new seawall demo, the dock, put in a new dock, the survey I just paid for is like out of date. Like it's not really an accurate survey. So surveyors do come back and do final survey and it's not as much as like an entirely new survey. You know, I think I paid like $1,400 for a survey. They'll come back for a few hundred more dollars and give me a final survey. So it's actually accurate. But I thought it'd be great if you gave us more leeway, longer time on a survey or also like if you guys already have a survey in the records, like I came down here, there was some discrepancy on the dock, like who owned it. And I was like, well, no, it's my parents' dock and someone in your office thought it might've been someone else's. So I came down here and I said, well, what's in the file for their house? Because they've lived there a long time. And there were like several copies of the survey. And I said, oh, well, nothing's changed over there. Like if you took this survey, even though it's old, it's still current because nothing is in question. So maybe there's some kind of a leeway if you guys have a survey on file and you can tie it to the bulkhead license, it can just get through that permit process. Because then most of the work will require a survey for the permit. But it was like the holdup. I, I was worried I was going to lose like a month or two's time because I couldn't get a permit without the license for the bulkhead. I hope that's making sense because I'm confusing myself. But so that was it. So I just wanted to say, I thought the comment you had was great about maybe giving us more leeway on the survey or somehow re, like thinking about, I guess, that procedure. That's all. So I'm sorry to take up your time. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to item B, unfinished business, employee retirement options, discussion on private deferred benefits, plans in the Florida League of Cities. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, last month we went over what our current condition is and are we in the market or not? Staff believes we're not in the market with our retirement for our employees. We're close with our general employees, but we're not close with our public safety or our police department. As we discuss the market, FRS, which is the Florida Retirement System contributes 30%, we contribute nine. So it's, we're not even close to being in the market with our retirement and it's going to hurt in retention and retainment. So we, we said we still go on with an education. So we, we decided to first start off with the League of Cities. I'm on a board with them and I've got online Jeremy Langley. Hi, Jeremy. How you doing? I know Jeremy for a while now and he, with the league, they, they have services. They provide pension plans to Boca Raton, Green Acres and a lot of other cities. All the counties have to be in the FRS, as I discussed. So he's here to talk about what services the league provides and if you have any questions. So it's just for education purposes, just to see where we're at and where should we go? Jeremy?
Yeah, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Appreciate you all giving.
One second, Jeremy, not coming in clearly.
So we can hear him well online. It's in this room that we can't hear him well.
Okay. So how do we fix that?
I don't know if Robert can do anything. He said he tried to do, work it out earlier, but it wasn't working. It sounds like it's the speaker here that is not working.
Can they do a microphone? Call it in and put it on the speaker.
Can you scream, Jeremy?
I can for a minute.
Maybe he can call you.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. I have his phone.
So Jeremy, maybe you can log out and Joe's going to call you.
He can probably stay there.
I mean, he can stay, just mute.
Video and then you don't.
Yeah, he can stay up there.
Okay. Is this better?
Well, you're going to have to mute yourself.
How about that?
Yeah. Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay.
Ladder would be better.
The only, the only problem now is I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to hear if anybody's asking me questions other than, than you, Joe.
Okay, I'll repeat the questions.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Well, yes. Yeah. Good, good evening, everybody. I'll, I'll try to make it brief. A whole lot of questions and then I'll sit here with you as long as you'd like. As mentioned.
I'm not sure that anybody in the, can you guys hear? Okay. This is a public meeting. No?
I'm shocked.
I'm shocked. Tony, can you hear?
Can you, can you guys hear it at all? No? You can hear it through this right here. I have it right next to the mic. Put it on the mic. I mean, literally right on.
Are you on speaker, Joe?
Yes.
Want to try this one?
We'll try whatever we can.
Did anybody try a hammer?
Jeremy, can you talk, please?
I can. Is that any better?
We can still hear him online too.
Well, it's for the audience. You guys don't hear that. I think it's worse with this. Yeah, right? Let me see if I can get this right. I mean, the speakers are on the bottom, right? Sing a song, Jeremy.
How about the testing song?
Yeah, that's pretty good.
Yeah. Can you guys hear that a little better?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's try it. And if anyone has any questions that you can't hear, let me know and I'll repeat it.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't want to repeat my. Okay, alright. Well, I don't want to repeat myself a third time, so I'm just hoping everybody heard me introduce myself at least. But I do, we do work with a bunch of defined benefit plans, Ron. I, I am guessing that you all have probably reached a point where likely you are having a hard time finding and retaining good officers, or you probably also maybe become a training ground for the sheriff's office. We've seen that on a few occasions. The, the market these days seems to demand having a defined benefit retirement for sheriffs, firefighters, first responders. Doubt that. It is, it does seem to be very challenging. Again, and so I, I'm assuming that's, that's why you all are looking into this. Things, as was mentioned with F R S, that's certainly an option and I'm not here to disparage F R S in any shape, manner or form, but what I've usually found is you can run your own defined benefit program, keep that in-house and typically you can do it at a much, for, for a lot less than F R S would cost. Usually what happens is F R S is where you kind of end up finding yourselves, if you're a good, healthy plan, usually you're just subsidizing all the plans who have gotten upside down for, for whatever reason. And so most likely, you would be able to again, offer something similar to F R S or less, or, you know, fingers crossed, you might even be able to offer a little bit of a better plan than what F R S can, is offering from a benefit standpoint and maybe pay the same or again, maybe still even pay a little bit less. Another advantage to that is, once you go into F R S, they, they set the rules. They, they tell you what the benefits are going to be and then they tell you what the costs are going to be, how much you all would have to contribute each year. Those, the contribution rates do fluctuate. If you had your own plan, they're going to fluctuate as well. But again, F R S sets those parameters and you have no say in it. And if you ever wanted to make changes, you can't really leave F R S either. So again, it's always, you know, if you can keep it in-house, it's good. Now you have the flexibility, the ownership over the plan to, to make changes as you go along, as you see fit. And again, probably doing all of this at a, at a reduced cost. That, that's the really quick short version. As far as what we can do, you know, as you're going down that path, I think the first thing that I would imagine is if you all were, were interested in pursuing this farther to find, to find out, you know, if there's a change that needs to be made, is I would recommend a cost study. You can have an actuary. Essentially, you'll give him your census data for the officers. He can put together a cost study for you. All that would tell you what, at least year one, what that contribution amount would be. So it got to give you an idea, of course, of what you're getting into. And then from there, if you did want to move forward, whether it's moving into F R S or if you wanted to start your own plan, what we do with, with all the municipalities that we work with is we can actually run that plan on your whole's behalf. So pretty much start to finish everything we could handle. Investments, paying out the benefits, running, just running the plan in its entirety. You would be forced to have, by statute, you would need a to oversee the plan. So we would actually go and work for that pension board. The pension board has no authority over the benefits of the plan. So it's not shing that and all of a sudden another board can just run up the costs or anything of that nature. They're tasked with overseeing the plan as it's written. They're made up of two participants within the, within the plans. You have two police officers. The city would appoint two individuals and then those four individuals would point a fifth trustee, five-member board. And the, one of the benefits of having this board, you are not required to, to go that route. But if you do set up a pension board, you follow first throughout the year, you can actually get a little bit of money that would come back to you all from the state that could be used to help offset some of the pension costs. So for police officers, there's an extra tax. It's already being collected on auto insurance premiums within Lake Clark Shores. And so that money currently, the state's keeping that, using it for things related to police officers, whether it be education, training at the state level. And then all the plans that are participating and have their own, following certain parameters, they're, they get a prorated amount sent back to them at the end of each year. That again, potentially used to help offset costs of the plan. So nice little extra benefit there. That's a lot of information. Real fast, I'll certainly pause. Any questions or any other directions you kind of want me to go with the conversation or?
Some questions?
I have a question. I don't know if you can hear me through the, through this mic or not. Does the small size of, of Lake Clark Shores employee pool affect our choice? Or send us in a particular direction over another direction?
You mean with the F R S versus a private pension versus defined contribution? So she's asking statistically, a small group like this, are they, do they mainly go to the F R S? Do they mainly go to 401Ks or defined contribution plans? Have any input on that?
A little bit. Unfortunately, I couldn't tell you the statistical breakout between F R S versus having your own plan that you all would, would run in-house. Certainly there are a lot of small communities throughout the state that have their own plan. I just, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what that breakdown is. What, as it relates to the 401A, 457B plans, those are, in, in the general employee sector, that is the predominant way. And there, you're seeing less and less defined benefit plans. However, for, again, for police and fire, the, the communities that don't offer defined benefit plan are starting to really move in the direction of, of adding that. We've had a number over the last handful of years start up their own plan, just in the last few years because they've run into the hurdle, again, of finding and retaining good officers. It's, it's very, very challenging if you don't offer a certain minimum level of retirement. That, that is a, a big benefit, big selling point. It's, it seems to be. So certainly between, again, between having your own F R S, I couldn't tell you statistically, but, but having a 401A as your option, retirement option, puts you at a large disadvantage. And you would be in the minority.
I think what I was trying to get at, Joe, is if we have a small pool of individuals, are the fixed costs spread across just a small group as opposed to, you know, spread?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question. And obviously I'm on this committee, so I don't believe there's many fixed costs. It's, it's pretty much all variable. The turnkey operation that the league offers, it's, it's all built into the, how much the, the fund takes in their investment costs, right?
That, that's part of it.
There's actual studies that are required, so that is, is a fixed cost, but those don't cost that much. So what other fixed costs would there be?
You, well, your main, the, the main. I'm sorry, was there another question?
No, go ahead.
Okay, you, you have, I think maybe five main costs or expenses to run a plan. You have your actuarial costs. Typically, a pension board will have their own pension attorney. You'll have an administrator of the plan. You'll have an investment consultant for the plan and then you'll have a custodial bank. Our fees are inclusive of the investment consultant, the administration and the custodial bank. So the only other two providers that, that a pension board would need or pension plan would need would be the actuary and the board attorney. But, and no matter who you hire, these fees end up being wrapped into the contribution rate. So F R S has expenses and fees. They're not on top of their contribution rate percentage. It's, it's built into that, the same way as if you're having your, your local plan. So if you're coming in with a, let's say a twenty-five percent contribution rate instead of a thirty-eight percent contribution rate, that's inclusive of all of your plan's expenses. So you don't have to then worry about the city's writing separate checks. The plan's assets pay for the entirety of the cost of the plan. The city doesn't write any extra checks outside of their normal contribution amounts.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Jeremy, really appreciate it. Sorry about the technical difficulties here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, no, no problem at all. I'm happy to help out. Certainly if you all have any questions going forward, be, I'll be available anytime, as you know, Joe.
Alright, take care. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Any other further discussion, Joe?
No, I was thinking, if I can, I'll try to get somebody from the Florida Retirement System, F R S, to come in and also make presentations. So you get that side of it, too. If that's what you'd like me to do for next, or we can get us, it's, it's an actual study. It's not that expensive, I believe, to get a consensus because we don't have that many officers. It's probably a thousand or two thousand dollars, not very expensive to start. The thing is, that excise tax that he talked about and I talked about last month, no one's going to tell you what that number is. We're just going to guess because there's no way to tell until you pass your own ordinance and you tell the state to stop sending all the money that comes from Lake Clark Shores to, come to us. So remember, I just guessed what that number would be. It'd be a close to a hundred thousand. That's my guess. But it's, it's two percent, one point eight five percent or something like that of every auto insurance. So fifteen hundred homes, if, if you, you know, do the math, it's a lot of money.
Any other questions?
You saying that to do, to do an actuary study about?
Yeah, we can get him back on the line, but he, I don't think it's expensive. It's like fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars to do a little actuary study. I can get him back on the line for that.
Is that something that's helpful or it's unnecessary?
It is necessary to go for a private pension. F R S would not need that. You just opt in. So we can wait on that and get the F R S, what their pros and cons. Obviously, he's biased with private. F R S is going to be more biased with the, with their product.
Where are the police officers? They, they weigh in on what?
No, I, I haven't surveyed them.
That's what I keep wanting to ask.
Yeah.
There's going to be advantages and disadvantages.
There's advantages and disadvantages and they're, they're listening just like we're listening. So. But I have not surveyed them yet.
And they receive a similar kind of, like, presentation?
They, they could, but I, I encourage them to listen to this, to the, to this, and they can always ask me questions. I've had many questions with corporal to me, I guess. I've had many discussions. So they're pretty, they're pretty familiar with, with what a defined benefit is and.
One thing is it'll have to be able to be supported down the line.
Hundred percent. It's a big decision.
It's a big decision.
That's why we're taking it slow.
Yes. Is it retroactive? So if somebody's worked for ten years?
That's, that's a great question. With the F R S, it's very strict. So there is some buy-in. So, and I'd like to take care of our dedicated, our employees, but, so it's more flexible when you have your own private because you, you can say, the actual person will say, it's thirty thousand dollars to buy, or twenty thousand dollars to buy years. We, we can manipulate that number a little bit because it's our plan. With the F R S, you can't manipulate anything. You could, they'll say you can only buy this amount of years and it costs this much and, you know, the, so you see what I'm saying? It's way more flexible with your own private plan.
I'm in the F R S, so I.
So am I. Yes.
The biggest downside to the F R S is the cost, the thirty-eight percent.
Thirty, thirty percent.
So for the smaller departments, that is a lot.
Right.
Coming from nine percent to thirty percent. So that's just something to consider. It's not something that you weigh one or the other. I agree with you for a smaller sized department and the workforce, that the private, the private pension has a, I think a lot more value to it, but that's obviously going to be up to the law, you know, the negotiations with law enforcement, whatever they want to do. And we, I support whatever they want, but I think that's moving forward, that's a good, a stair step. If they wanted to go to F R S, that's something we would have to discuss. That's a lot of money.
Another big flexible point that, between a retire, or a private versus F R S, is it's, it's fixed, three percent. The employee contributes three percent. So it's thirty percent by the employer. It's three percent by the employee. Many cities fluctuate that number a lot. They say they contribute, I've seen cities contribute, the employee contribute nine percent. As long as they feel they're getting more benefit than the F R S, the employee's willing to contribute for better benefits. So you can make that number, that three percent which is fixed with the F R S, you can make it whatever you want when you have a private pension. You can sort of for five percent or three percent or whatever you'd like.
Like you mentioned, the upside with the, the cities, you have the one seventy-five money, which, when you've got a county in your F R S, that is not, you're excluded from that. So.
Right.
Even though you may make, you have more, you're putting the contribution in nine percent, ten percent, whatever the number is, that can boost their, their pension, but also to supplement it, they're also going to have the one seventy-five money to.
It's free money. It's definitely free money. That we're, that we're not getting.
Right. That would be an enticement to retain, it would help boost their salary to retain more officers, I think.
Right.
Even though I'm from Miami-Dade County, I'm in F R S. We worked with a lot of municipalities that are smaller, that are not in the F R S system. So I understand both sides of the fight.
Anything else?
Anything else for discussion?
Just a thought. The actual, that you're talking about, Joe, is something that will produce the numbers and include, hey, here's what's coming from the town. Here's the cost of the town. Here's what we're going to get from the excise tax.
No one can actually predict that until you actually do it. He might have a better predictor than I have, but you won't have actual numbers, my understanding. You won't have actual numbers until you tell the state, stop collecting that money and sending it to us.
And then you truly have your true.
When you pass the ordinance.
Okay.
But I'm sure they can predict it better than I can.
Yeah.
Because they're going to have to come up with a rate, an estimated rate.
Hey, we're good?
Yes.
Okay, we'll continue to discuss this and you'll bring in people from F R S and.
I will try.
Get them on board and we'll see what they have to say, too.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to new business. Item A, choosing a regular member to the zoning board of adjustments. Joe, you want to take that? I mean, we have the resumes and the applications from them.
Sure, and this doesn't have to be decided tonight. We have an open. The, we don't have a meeting scheduled, so we could take time. We can do this next month. But we have an opening on the board. We have two alternate members that have said they would be interested becoming a member of the board. So if you select one, the other one would still maintain as an alternate. Their resumes are included. You're supposed to look at, you know, diversity of, you know, we, we've mentioned that in the code. An architect, an engineer, realtor. So you guys can decide on tonight if you know the two individuals or you can take time and call them and give them a little interview and then come back next month. There's no rush on this.
I'd like more time.
Okay.
That's fine.
Just a little more time.
Have we, are they opposed to coming in and just sharing?
You, you, you guide me what to do. I'll definitely invite them if you tell me to do that.
I mean, I think it'd be helpful. I think more time is good, but inviting them to see if they're willing to come to a meeting and speak, I think would be helpful, at least to kind of, you know.
Just shake it, shake head. Shake head. Yeah, okay. Alright, we'll invite them.
For sure.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to status reports. Chief, you're front and center.
My report.
You need to use your microphone, sir. You need to use your microphone, sir. Come on now.
We have enough issues tonight.
My report's attached to your report, if you have any questions.
Any questions for the chief?
Yeah, chief, thank you for everything. I do have a quick question. It was mentioned to me by residents, something about a, and I wanted to get your feedback on it, on a police blotter. There's some information, news or something to the residents, it kind of, kind of let them know what's happening in town. I know you give your report as you're stating it here, but, you know, a way for residents to get a little insight into what's happening in our town from a crime standpoint, or what we're doing. And I think, do we have anything like that? I think at one point, there was some information being produced in a newspaper that was going out and circulated, just kind of what's happening from a crime or police standpoint, activity in the town. Do we have any blotter? Do you have anything like that, that we can come up with any ideas?
We should, we can put something together as public information. Years ago, I did it, but the council, some wanted it, some didn't. I talked with the town manager, and we're going to work together and come up with something, and then he'll probably contact you. We'll see what we can do.
That sounds beautiful, chief. Thank you again.
Anything else for the chief? Yep. Good. Okay. Charlie, you're next, sir.
I have nothing to report. It's been quiet for the last several weeks.
Is that a good thing or bad?
It's a very good thing.
Oh, I, I have something, actually. In the report, it says that Officer Manik. Hi, sweetie. Distributed 40 safety vests for night. Is that for people walking on the streets with their dogs, I'm assuming? That's a wonderful thing. How did, how did we?
Or their baby strollers.
Right. How did we let people know about that?
Well, we, we've been contacting, I think he has more vests to hand out. Some people don't want to wear them, some do. It's been brought up many times, why don't we do this? And over the last 24 years, I've done it many, many times. And even a couple of times, I've paid for it out of my personal expense for, for the vest. So the manager authorized me, and we've been getting vests, and, and Ed is really, he works in the evening, and, and the people like him, he can communicate with them to get the vest out.
How many vests have we've given out, Ed?
About, about 40.
40?
And there are people that are jogging, baby strollers, walking, roller skates, skateboards. At nighttime, a lot of people are walking along the street, they don't have sidewalks. And it's right, everybody's in a war袍, because that's what they're wearing. But they're, it's a fluorescent lime green vest, you can see both day and nighttime, and it has reflective stripes on it. So the headlights, too, they're not as much as your culture. And on the roadway, you can see them like two blocks away, where without the vest, you don't see the person, you're almost on top of them.
I see them in the early morning as well.
And Officer, are you just seeing them on the road at night and handing them a vest? Is that how we're communicating that? Or is there some other means of?
Someone walking on the roadway, dark clothing, and you almost have to drive your car around them for safety. Then I usually pull off the road, wait for them to walk up to me, and I have one of them in my hand. And I asked them, would you like one of these? Because for visibility, the traffic will see you better, and they are very effective.
Great.
Thank yous that found Lake Clark Shores, is concerned with their safety.
That's wonderful.
Willing to yield them something, but we're, we give them a $5 piece.
Right. That's wonderful.
Get them half price at the Army Super School.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Very receptive that, that the town's actually giving them something.
Yeah.
We're not selling it, we're just providing it for their own personal safety.
Yeah. And I think part of the communication, Joe, I think that's part of one of the things that makes our town special, where our police officer pull over the side of the road, here's a vest, make sure they're safe, check on them. And I think we need to applaud that by having some kind of communication, says, hey, if you're walking on the road with your dog, here's a vest, or here's some proper procedures, and if you don't have one, go through our police department. I think that would go a long way with just communicating with the residents and actually making this feel like, you know, the place that it's always been and continuing to be. So chief, applaud you for doing that. But if we can figure out, Joe, how to add that to our communication package somehow, to get that information to residents, because if you're not walking at night and you're only walking in the day, it's still a hazard with the dogs. And maybe we can have some peace in their communication about that, and dogs, and all the stuff that we've heard tonight. But I think this vesting is something special, that our police needs to be applauded for that. And that goes a long way with everything else that we've been talking about, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, this is one of the things that sets us apart, is the neighborliness and the, and the kindness of something like that, the generosity. And I authorized it, because it was only $2, but the extra $4, I got a picture of the council in the back.
Will the mayor sign it?
That's right.
I'm like one of those baseball guys, there's a little fee associated. $4, you said? $4.
No, we're definitely going to publicize that more, and the buzz and everything else. But thank you, Ed. Great work.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Joe, you're up next, sir.
All right. Coincidentally, the next two meetings are on the 11th, February 11th and March 11th. We have two big, we have, on Wednesday, where our senior club meets here in the chamber at 11:30, and we have our big annual barbecue. It's the day after Valentine's Day. It's Saturday, not Sunday, Saturday. It's going to be from 1 to 4. We're at the stage where it's only a month away, so we're looking for volunteers. We know you want to have fun with your family, we're going to have a country band, we're going to have great food, we're going to have face painting and all kinds of kids' games, but, so just volunteer for a couple hours. Don't, you don't have to volunteer for the whole five, six hours, just a couple hours would be great. Anytime, just come by, we've got a lot of work to do. We'll be working Wednesday, Thursday night, Friday night, and all day Saturday, obviously. So if you can volunteer a couple hours, we appreciate that. So let me get into the bridge. As you all know, the state has partially declined our, our request to change the railing system to a more decorative rail. They said you have to keep the concrete on the bottom. So I put a couple pictures in our SaaS report here. But that bullet rail, which is a, it's a basic ugly, in my opinion, rail that goes on the top, we can change that to a more decorative rail. They're, they are being more receptive to that. So we're going to go in that direction, we're going to get you a price. It's, it's not structural, so there's no big rush on this. The other one would have been structural. So we'll keep you informed and keep you updated, but it'll be a lot less than $70,000. Obviously, you approved, and my, my guess. But we, we want to see what they can do about it more decorative. That's more of a pedestrian rail. As you can see, it's just on the top.
And you, I like, I like that, with the picture that you've included. In terms of branding, what if we took the logo and had it made out of the same metal, and put it on, like, I, you know, either side of the, of, on the entrance to the bridge? A little metalwork, you know, some more metalwork with our wonderful logo. That's branding.
Yeah. No, yeah, we can look at that. I always find the problem with branding something like that is vandalism, and they, people destroy things. It's a lot easier to fix it when it's like that, but we'll look into it.
If you stay with that metal.
Put in this circle.
Yes.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, but again, vandalism is a terrible thing, that does happen. But I'll look into those ideas.
One of the best items in that report is what? About the bridge? It's still scheduled to be finished on time. I know everybody down there has been really dealing with a lot of inconvenience, but we're right on schedule. I'm anticipating it'll be done a little bit earlier than they think. Especially if we're going to keep getting all this nice weather.
Yeah.
You know, to continue to be able to work. So that's, that's also good news in the report.
Yes. Well, August 8th is the date they have to get it done by, but he keeps giving us a flow chart that says in July, so way ahead of schedule. So we'll, hopefully, we say that way.
Yep.
But I showed you that we approved the change order for some water line, that the water main, they didn't, we had to take some more out. It was not in good shape. The thing I'd like to discuss is, the good question Christie brought up, and Jen brought it up again tonight, is, to give you, can we change the, the three-year requirement on a survey? Let me give you a little, tell you a little bit about building officials. I cannot tell as a, tell us, as a civilian, as the boss, I cannot tell a building official to condemn a building. I can't tell them to approve a permit, that we don't, on the Florida statutes, we can't do that. But this is one of the things we can do, because it's different from every city. So we asked our, our building officials and some engineers, what do they, what do they, do they want? Would they change the three-year requirement? They said, the consensus was no, they liked the three-year. So, you know, I went a little further. I says, well, let's say the council approves 10 years, because it's up to you all. And they said, we don't, we really don't think 10 years is a good idea. So I said, what about seven? What about five? I said, well, maybe five. They said they could work with that, but they're, they still believe the three years is an acceptable amount of years. So then I went deeper, so, because I knew you guys possibly would have more questions. So I went to the county, I said, what is the county asked for? Their requirement as a survey has to be one year or less. So they are way more strict than we are. So didn't stop there, because I knew the county does half, half of the business in the whole county, but they're cities. So we surveyed the six cities around us. They're at one or two years. They do not do three years. So we're actually the most lenient of anybody. So you can change it, it's up to you. But all the consultants that I've talked to, two engineers and two building officials, say, three years is probably a good number.
Charlie, are there legal ramifications?
I haven't looked into it, but typically, three years is the max.
That's.
And, and, no, it's not the standard. The standard is, for many, is one. The standard is one.
County's one.
The majority is, is one, but three is acceptable, and I, I haven't seen any that are longer than three. But I'll be happy to, to spend a couple minutes and, and see what we can find on, on expanding it to, say, even five. The problem is, things change in, over a period of time, and if you've got an old survey, you may not have accurate information.
Well, actually, that's what I, that's why I brought it up, is because we kept reading these memos of people seeking things, and, and large numbers, you know. Jen mentioned $1,400. I received, after I brought it up at the last meeting, I did receive a couple of phone calls and texts from residents saying, oh, man, I just spent $700, it killed me. Charlie mentioned things change, but do they? That's, that's my question, because these plots, you know, everybody's got their fences up and their, and their hedges. The, the plat, the plots aren't changing in Lake Clark Shores, unless somebody's combining a couple of parcels, or dividing a parcel. What would make a survey go out of date in three years, or five years, or seven years? What changes that, that, that would cause the need for a new survey?
I asked that question, and sometimes I got an answer, sometimes I didn't. But the answers that I did get was, you kind of forget what you did after three years. Let's say you moved the drain field or something like that, that's important. So anything that's underground that you wouldn't see, that would, that would show up in a new survey. So they said, three years, you're going to forget what you've done under that property after three years. But that was the only answer I got, and I asked that question, because it's a good, again, this is a good discussion.
Right. If somebody put in a new drain field, they would have had to get a permit from the town. So that would all show up in the town's files to say, oh, I'm sorry, your, your, your two-year-old survey, or your four-year-old survey, is, it needs to be redone. Other than a drain field, is that the only thing that could change?
That's the only thing.
Well, if, if, if they're on the water, you can have the boundary of the water, because of erosion change. Fences and walls are put in and, and are not put in where they should be, if, if they did not get the appropriate permit or survey when they got the permit. I can look at the general requirements. I know for mortgage companies, they're not going to want an older survey, but we're not looking at, at doing this for the purposes of financing. But we can come back with some information on what is generally accepted. And from my past experience, it's anywhere from one to three years.
I, I'd like to take as much monkeys off the back of our, financial monkeys off the back of our residents as possible. And so I was going to recommend seven or 10 years. It seems that Joe's taken 10 years off the table, but I, I don't see seven years.
They took it off.
Yeah. I don't see seven years as being unreasonable. I, you know.
Let me add this, there are several parcels on the water where the surveys are not accurate, and there are pieces of pie that are actually owned by the town, not the residents. If that went on for 10 years, and then, I'll give you an example, because we had a resident come in, where they wanted their pool, it couldn't be done, because once the survey was completed, it was realized that a little portion of the property belonged to the town, which then could not allow the pool.
The water, the water, next to the water.
At the seawall, yeah. Yeah, it's just, you remember this one, Charlie?
I do.
So 10 years is a long time. So I don't think things won't change in here, they will. And if people are doing things without knowledge, it's never a good thing, because somewhere, that's going to possibly come back and bite somebody. I use the same surveyor that my neighbor used, so we wouldn't have any problems, and they came up with two different things. And he was like all upset, and I'm like, well, I use your guy, don't tell me, I'm not a surveyor. He's the surveyor. So it was off by, I don't know, maybe eight to 10 inches, which to some people, that's a big thing. But that's one of the downfalls of so long, in my opinion. So, and we, we ended up, what had to happen, and of course, the residents weren't happy, actually got a good deal out of it, but they were able to get their pool, they had to buy that parcel of land, and then they were able to put the pool and do the rest of their, you know, they were fixing the houses up, just like they do here, and like, make sure everybody comes in. So 10 years is a long time. But Charlie, it would be nice if you could.
I, I can get you.
It would be helpful.
I think it would be also.
Now, when I bought the property, my property, the fence line was incorrect. Technically, I got some of, some of my stuff's on his side, and some of his stuff is on my side, but that's just, you know, we're neighbors, so we don't.
But that may not always occur.
I know.
That's where the problem begins.
That was my point.
The new guy comes in, and maybe it's not as nice.
Like you said, things change. You don't remember what you did three years ago, five years, or seven years, or 10 years.
Right.
I can't tell you how many times I've dealt with pools and fences and things being on the wrong, or not, not within a setback. I'm not saying the three or five years is going to settle it. Like I said, I went to the professionals, but there's a lot of pools that are not in the setback. There's a lot of fences that are on the property line when they shouldn't be. It's just over and over, and luckily, we don't have to deal with it much. We save it, it's a simple matter, because surveyors, they don't always get it right. To the mayor. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yep. Come on up there, Joe.
This is Cher, 8060 Westlake. I'm a realtor, and as far as the surveys go, I think having it within a year or three years max is very important. We're a developing, you know, small town, and I've sold to people who've gotten new surveys, where we've closed on the properties, and the old surveys were wrong.
Yeah.
And on top of that, there was pool equipment, there was a pool, a deck, we're talking seawall. And now this is a new issue, where essentially, my client, who bought the property, could take all the pool equipment, move his fence line over there, and that with, and a 10-year survey could bring that, because technology's advancing. Not every survey, like, you had a survey done by the same guy, he was off eight inches. He had five surveys done, and it ended up being about an eight-foot spread. With anything waterfront, needs to be within a year. Erosion, if their seawall is undermining, you know, there's potentially land that they could encroach on in the, the waterway, or they have potentially more land they could build a dock on. But fences get moved, things get blown down, not everything's recorded. And if we are too lenient with this, it's going to come back and bite the new people coming in and proving properties. Unfortunately, we're not all handshake people. I think a great example is, you know, I built a orchid archer, and I spent two years with you guys resolving. And I spent two years with you guys resolving that issue. And a current survey would have brought that up for any, anything I wanted to do moving forward.
And you had no problems.
And I'm exactly, and I, and I provided that for you guys. I understand we have to do our due diligence before just adding on. I think 10 years is way too long. We're going to end up backtracking and having more lawsuits between neighbors and nasty neighbors. I think keeping up to date with technology is important.
Yeah, it's, it's standard procedure to get a survey when you buy a, a house. And yet if you're getting a mortgage, you have to.
Absolutely.
But what I'm talking about is if you get that survey in 2025, you buy your house. And then you want to do a fence four years later. Do you really have to spend, you know, six, $800, $100, you know, to get a new survey? You've already got one when you bought the place. So that, that, uh, I'm taking it, you know.
So many variables, I, I think for good practice of neighbors, good fences makes a good neighbor essentially. So yeah, what if, what if it was blown down in those four years and they restated? I've had deals blow up over six inches of fence line. People care about six inches. So just being kind of loose on it and not double checking and cross checking it, I think could escalate to later things down the line. And that's just from transacting in the neighborhood and in Lake Worth where there's a lot of setbacks. I think we need to stay current with that. So we don't go backwards, we go forward. Cause good fences makes good neighbors, in my opinion.
I'm not saying that, I'm not, I certainly don't disagree with that. I'm just saying that a 2025 survey could, could still be good in 2029 for a fence.
Yep, but cross check it.
Possible.
It's possible, but I, like I said, I had a client, I had a client that had to get five in, in Lake Clark, right on Pine Tree.
Well, see, that's what I'm trying to avoid is I'm trying to avoid people having to pay for multiple surveys.
I understand, but we, we, we need them because not every, not everyone's doing their A, their A plus job that day. And moving forward, anything you construct, you should have a current survey within a year or three years, in my opinion. That's all I got to say.
Thanks, Joe. We're going to have Charlie bring us back some.
I'll look at it and see if we can even expand it to five. But he's correct. The standard is anywhere from one to, to three. And I think the majority are, are at one.
All right, what else you have for us, Joe?
We, we hired a new assistant chief, David England. He, he just recently retired from the town of Jupiter as their chief. He's going to start at the end of the month and, uh, we'll swear him in next month, hopefully, at, at a council meeting. Uh, we're still going to try to do a ribbon cutting at the boat ramp. We're still completing one little thing. Uh, we're getting a new, new phone system. You guys probably hopefully will not see a change. Uh, we did successfully negotiate new, uh, windows or utility building. And we are changing out all the tennis lights, um, out here at our park, right here at Town Hall Park. We found a lot of the bulbs are out, so we're just going to change them all. We got a good quote, that's $6,700 for like 13 fixtures. So I think that's a pretty good quote. So, um, they were the most competitive. Our, our events last month were great. The menorah lighting, the Christmas by, not Christmas by the lake, but the, uh, Christmas by town hall. Cause we didn't do it by the lake. Uh, I've got a lot of compliments and I thought staff did a great job. So that's my report.
Any, any more questions? Pardon me?
I thought they were under contract.
They, they were under contract that just recently expired, the five-year warranty.
Just missed it.
Yeah. Yeah, we looked into that. Thanks.
We have any questions for Joe from council?
Yeah, I do. Joe, a little feedback on, I know the Christmas tree lighting menorah event went great. Any feedback on direction for the Christmas tree and some of the outages with that? And when is it going to come down? Any feedback on any of that stuff?
The, the, the tree's not down because we had a problem with our lift. So it's, that's the only reason, um, that tree is possibly does need to be retired. It's, it's, it's getting a little last legs.
Yeah, seen, seen a lot of years. How many years have we had her?
Yeah, that, um, can't answer that question, but.
That long.
Yeah. Way before I got here.
Just so you all know, we used to have a real tree. I can't, I wrote a note to myself and trying to remember.
It's still there.
Why we.
There's, there's a tree that's in the park.
That's not the real tree.
Oh, you mean a real tree.
A real tree that we had brought in.
I got you.
Real Christmas tree. That's a, that's a.
Problem with real trees, they're very expensive.
Right.
Extremely expensive.
And that was probably the thing because, uh, believe it or not, we, we do have a judiciary responsibility and we do try to.
I love real trees, but.
So I do too. So we'll, we'll look into all that.
What about the recommendation?
Did the electric work there?
To move the stone.
I'm not kidding you.
The memorial stone that goes along with the tree.
Yeah, I, I'm going to look into what that comment.
Probably why he knew all that information about the GDFIs and all of that.
Well, he, he, he does try to help us sometimes.
Yeah.
Those kind of issues, because we did have some issues with the GFIs, he's correct.
Okay, good. All right, we'll move on to council comments. Christie?
I don't know if you mentioned this before I arrived, uh, but I'd like to extend the, um, the prayers, uh, to the Quatro Chief family, uh, from, on behalf of the town council. And I, I, I was very gratified to look at the town Facebook page and see that, uh, Chief and Dana had visited, the, the family the other day, which I thought was a really, again, speaks to the wonderful sense of community that we have and our great, and our wonderful police force as well.
Thank you, um, for saying that, because I was going to say something similar. Not a great Christmas for everybody in this town, but, um, we're really so lucky to have you guys. And yeah, that was so heartwarming. Um, on Facebook today, they posted that photo. And I just want to mention too, that I think we all sitting up here know that this town is not all doom and gloom. And I would be, I, I would say most of us would agree that we think it's probably the greatest town in Palm Beach County to live in, which is why we are giving our time and serving up on this dais. But I think one of the most important pieces of what we do outside of our voting is to communicate what we are doing with this community, which is why I'm going to harp on that subject, um, until we address that issue. And that's communicating what's going on and, and the good things that we're doing as well. You know, some of the images from the holidays could be up on our social media. Uh, the, the hard work that you guys do when you're going to the League of City meetings in Tallahassee. I, you know, I hope that those are also wins that we can share with this community. So, um, thanks for bearing with me on that.
Thank you. I think we're in life that we know need to be better communicators. So if you know, I'm always in the fire service and we always had that struggle of communicating, communicating better with our members, with our public and with our own department. So I, I believe we always can do better. As, as Vice Mayor Maples brought up, we have a multitude of demographics. And maybe we need to look into not just one form of communication. Some, some people like to read the hard copies. Some people are good with the tabs on the, uh, website. Some people like the buzz letter and some people do multitude. But if we can, the more people we can reach and communicate what we do, and I agree with. Why my colleague here to, that we need to, uh, post more of what we do. Communicate, you know, the good thing, you know, you know, we're not doom and gloom, but we do have, we do do a lot of things that, uh, this community doesn't get to see. And I think we have an awesome police force and that's, uh, recognize them for what they do.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, it's so funny. I was thinking to myself, I don't know if anybody remembers the day that I think Elliot Cohen Communications was here. And like the first few comments was like, how bad the communication was. Thought that was so interesting. I'm like, dude, this is a bad day for this guy. Like, so I'm always for, uh, making sure that the folks who do work for us are doing it well. And, um, not just starting well, but finishing well and going through the process well. And being willing to change if, uh, things aren't going well to make the necessary changes. And change is okay, uh, if things get better. And so, uh, definitely, um, this council is preaching communication, Joe. So hopefully we can have, um, the Elliot Cohen communications team come and provide what that looks like and maybe what that could look like in the future. Beyond that, I also, uh, quick shout out. I mean, there's a lot going on in this town over the holidays. Some of it really great, some of it not so great. But I know that a lot of the residents rallied together, um, to do whatever was necessary to help Chief get some things that he needed for resources to help some of the families that were affected by a recent accident. You know, folks going to the hospital again, PD stepping up to do the job, um, and being there and being present, which makes all of us really look good. So team, thank you for that. Thank you to staff for all that you guys do during the holidays and the hard work that you've guys put in, uh, to help us look good up here and, and, and be able to get us the information we need so we can make good, sound decisions. So thank you to all of you folks who stayed, to the team that's still here, just got some time left to present. Thank you guys for being here. Thank you, residents.
Okay, happy new year, everyone. All the best to Lake Clark shores. Motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second?
Second.
We're adjourned. We're going to move forward to the Lake Clark shores community redevelopment agency meeting for January 14th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Chairman Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Vice Chairman John Maples.
Here.
Commissioner Bridget Keating.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor Materio.
Here.
Commissioner Kristy Mossbach.
Here.
Okay, any audience comments? Nope, anything written or sent in?
No, not regarding this story.
Okay, uh, take a motion for approval of consent?
So moved.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are going to finally get to you, Nicole. Thank you for your patience.
Yes.
While I was moving along, I was saving so I don't talk too much. We're dying to hear what you have to say.
If we can hear you.
Well, she's live.
Thank God.
Oh, she's got a little printout. That's fantastic. Love a good printout.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
It is an absolute pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Nicole Plunkett with Cotler and Hearing. I'm a partner with Cotler and Hearing. I'm also a licensed landscape architect and a certified land planner. And I'm really excited, uh, to be working with the town of Lake Clark shores. I also want to introduce, uh, my colleague McKenna West.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm McKenna. Uh, I'm also a certified land planner, project manager at Cotler and Hearing, uh, and I specialize in community engagement.
So we were really excited to catch the city council, the town council portion of the meeting because I think communication, uh, will come into something where we can team up together and use that energy and use the feedback, uh, from that standpoint. But I figured what we could do tonight is give you an update as to what we've been up to the past month or so. Uh, we did have a chance to meet with staff and, um, I truly appreciate the, uh, the feedback and the time of Joe and Emily and, and the police and fire. We, we got so much great feedback. And so we wanted to bring you up to speed on what we learned and propose a couple of ideas, questions, sort of, to understand the communications between the Cotler and Hearing team and, and what the expectations is from the CRA. And, um, this is totally informal and we're here to, to work with you and to get your feedback. And, uh, we're here to, to move forward on that. So we'll just quickly go through this PowerPoint. Oh, good, I can see it up here too. Great. Um, so I've already kind of jumped through today's, uh, objectives. So of course we know that this particular project, this master planning project encompasses the three parks that are directly adjacent to I-95 on Forest Hill Boulevard. These three parks are the Memorial Park, Pine Tree Park and Norris Park on the north side of the road. I did have a chance, uh, to meet with staff in December. And we kicked off the meeting just here in the offices and talked about some of the desires. I asked a ton of questions and it was such a helpful meeting. But also part of what we did was we hopped in the golf cart and drove out to the parks. And I got to walk the parks with staff and just really ask questions, take a ton. We have a ton of pictures and really to experience it, uh, out there, which was really important. A couple of the key, key takeaway points from my visit was the connectivity and access, knowing that we, we took the golf cart out there and I thought that that was really convenient. I know the bridge is under construction, so, um, that causes a difficulty and, and access point. But I think it was really great to utilize that. Another point was that we walked across to the north park, the north park as well. So I experienced walking across Forest Hill Boulevard and really understanding from a firsthand perspective, how, um, intimidating it is and, um, fast it is. And so I think that that's something that we really have to take into consideration on, um, what, what that use of that area is and how we want people to access it. And I just think it's something that's, it's going to be really important with that. Of course, the community experiences is feedback. This is all kind of tying into feedback that we got from staff was just, how do we unify the parks? Something to provide for maybe a cohesive design related to a landscape palette or a seaming. Of course, this all circles back into the branding. Do we incorporate certain types of materials, colors, fonts, experiences? These are everything that we can put into, uh, this master plan, which quite simply, I think is something that will just be almost like a design guidelines, a strategy, a handbook that can be used anytime in the future. So this isn't us telling you where the plants have to go or what has to happen, but just expanding upon what you've already developed in your CRA plan for these particular areas. And of course, something else that I, I've heard, and of course, looking up here at your, your beautiful logo and looking around here and seeing, uh, the artwork here in the town chambers is the nature and conservation. You have the waterways and you really have a great opportunity to, to really enhance the special nature of your town. And, and McKenna and I are here to listen and here to incorporate those things into this master plan. Something that will be really important within this entire process is understanding what type of program, programming elements that we want to see here within these parks. If there's something that's, that's missing, if there's something we want to enhance. A couple of the feedback that we received from staff included, um, recreational features like paddle boarding, kayaking, rowing. I've heard that it's a very active, uh, water engaged town, including, uh, boats. And, um, that's something that was really nice to see while I was out in the parks as well. And of course, uh, lighting for safety, any sort of seasonal aesthetics. So do we want to put the Christmas tree here? Are there going to be other events here? So all of these things, I'm just sharing, just to kind of get your minds thinking about what are types of things that we want to perhaps put in here and provide for a guideline? Because really this guideline would be great. At least the feedback that I'm getting is that perhaps five, six, seven years where maybe you might not be on the board. What is the element or guideline that you want to provide to your, uh, your future seatmates? Who will be up here making decisions and guiding the town? And of course facilities, do we want to incorporate bathrooms and having thoughtful design to address, uh, any of the community concerns? And do we want to provide for flexibility for events? I hear barbecue was coming up and maybe there are other types of events you can have there. But, um, taking all of this in, into how do we propose this? And so, whoops, I'm a little too far back. So a couple of challenges we identified, um, of course, the, um, if we wanted to include something related to the water for dock construction. Of course, there's permitting restrictions and other types of, um, uphill battles we might have to do related to the water. But I don't see that that's anything that we, we have to be concerned of today. I just wanted to throw things out there. And of course, the Forest Hill Boulevard, safety, noise management, um, and the space limitations at Norris Park. It is a very narrow area, but, um, it is the gateway into your town when vehicles come off of I-95. So it can really be this cohesive design, even if it's not particularly something where residents or folks actually go to, but it's part of that visual, uh, design that you see driving into the town. And there are opportunities for ecotourism, bird sanctuary, aquatic plantings, enhanced safety with lighting, security cameras, and of course boosting the community identity, uh, through this cohesive signage. So I want to share a couple of things, uh, and actually I'm going to pass the mic over to McKenna here. But, um, this was an example that we most recently did related to community engagement. But this was an example that we most recently did related to community engagement because within our proposal that we executed with you, we've included a community engagement portion, which would include a survey, which would be in digital and in paper form, and also providing for one public engagement session. So we're going to just share, and I know I shared this during the initial presentation back in September, but sort of as a refresher of what some of the other cities and communities and municipalities are doing, just to get you, to show you some ideas of what we were thinking related to this community engagement process. So McKenna, why don't you take it away?
Yeah, so I'm just diving into getting involved in this process. I didn't have the pleasure of joining Nicole on the tour. So I'm just starting to learn about the community, but I am here to provide my expertise on community engagement. You know, the key to sustainable decision-making and design and the built environment is the convergence of perspectives. So I'm here to make sure that we have a thorough survey process that targets your population, meets meets a representative demographic of the population and I I will assist in analyzing the results to drive that through the the final engagement session. That'll be kind of what we envisioned to be like a participatory site planning process. So that's kind of kind of the vision going into this, but we, of course, want to get your feedback on refining the survey. I do have an example here that we used for the City of Atlantis. That was an extremely successful process that we undertook just a few months ago. Some lessons learned there that we'll carry into this one, and I'll give you that example. I just want to show you a couple of photos of what we did there. So so there's a there's a survey there on that side. And then we had, we had a couple of the survey results prepared onto some boards when we went to the engagement session at for the Paul Kins Memorial Park Design Sherret. So we were able to catch residents at the door and tell them kind of what we've already heard based on this here, what I'm showing on the slide. And then we carried that through to, sorry, I'm having trouble with this. To a discussion with them with some concepts that we worked up of of the park itself so that they could give us active feedback as to what they thought about the elements that we had incorporated into the design. And through that, we were able to capture a lot more a lot more detail than we did with the survey. So the survey is a lot of checkboxes, A, B, C, some open form responses that gets us a really good starting point for understanding kind of what the community wants to see in terms of the final plan. But the final engagement session is really where we refine the interests of the community and we're able to target additional populations that we perhaps didn't get the chance to speak to with the survey. So that's about all I have to say on that.
Thanks, McKenna. And so really, just to kind of wrap up with this and I, again, I'm really glad that I saw the the town council portion of this related to the communications because in order to have, like McKenna was saying, in order to have a successful feedback, true feedback from residents and in order to have a high percentage of response rates, there has to be a clear communication message to get the information out there. So for example, when we worked with the City of Atlantis, they had an email list of all of their residents and so they they actively emailed them. They also posted the survey link on their, they have a like a resident Facebook page. They linked it on their city website. And for those patrons and residents who don't have computer, don't have cellphone, they made sure to provide for copies, hard copies in the city, the city hall to go to. And on top of that, the city manager, Brian Mori, took that extra step because he just knew which residents would never leave the house or be able to do that, but wanted to participate. He made sure to hand deliver all of those. And so with that, we had, I believe it was somewhere around a twenty-three percent response rate for the community, which was a very good example of the demographic of the City of Atlantis. And I believe their population was a little bit lower than yours. I think yours is about third, you can correct me if I'm wrong, thirty-five hundred. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yes.
As of, yeah, I think the twenty twenty census had around thirty-five hundred, whereas the City of Atlantis was just above twenty-five hundred. So it's it's not too too often sized. So with that, I, that's where we are right now and we're happy to be here tonight. But we would love to get feedback from you, the CRA board, just sort of expectations of this process, timeline, how we can possibly work with the communications topic that was discussed earlier. Because I truly think that if a method was determined through that, we could really run these these digital surveys through that communication message to reach an even higher number of people. So you're not trying to do things twice.
Any questions?
Nicole, you mentioned a dock as a problem. Is it, are we prohibited from putting a dock there?
The only reason I mentioned the dock was that anything that has to go in the water would have to be permitted. I believe it's through the South Florida Water Management Districts.
Yeah.
To. Side, yeah.
Yeah, so when you start getting some of those other authorities.
But how recent is the survey?
But that would be more on the pine, that would be on the pine tree side, moral side would be us.
We could possibly do it there.
Yeah. Moral side would be us.
Yes.
We'll have to get with the the civil engineer, what's ours and what's.
And Nicole, what did you mean about when you mentioned aquatic aquatic planting and of course, bird sanctuary, which our whole town is? What is what is aquatic planting in?
Just throwing out ideas, if there were opportunities to kind of clean up some of those waterfronts. I did see areas where trash was getting stuck on the sides of it. And so if there was an opportunity to beautify any of it, to provide for additional habitat for those water birds that hunt and fish in there, we're just throwing out ideas at this point and we're here to be open ears about about what you believe would be the best fit for the town.
One more, one more comment if I could.
Absolutely.
When when we had three companies make presentations, every one of them had a few good ideas in their presentation. Have you had a chance to go back and look at your competitions?
I haven't visually. Is there a video of it I can watch? I did listen. I did listen. And the great thing about our industries is that each one of us does provide different elements within the landscape architecture, land planning worlds. And so we we each, that's why I like how collaborative we all are. And so I love working, I've worked with each of those companies and we all see each other at different presentations, but yes, you're correct.
I would encourage you to go back and watch that. It'll be on YouTube or on our on the town website because you can crib off of of off of your your.
And if there was anything in those presentations that you liked, let us know, please.
Is it possible, I know as you're looking at the dock piece, is it possible to have it something similar to like downtown West Palm and Flagler where boats can come up and park? I think if we're having events down at the park, having boat access, be able to pull up the boat, get out and do the whole thing, I think will it'll make it a different experience if you can get out of your boat and walk up to the park to the tree lighting deal versus everyone having to just do the golf carts. I think it would add a little another, I think, a different crowd maybe to the event that wouldn't naturally come without that.
Absolutely.
So something similar to West Palm and Flagler where the thing kind of goes up, you pull right in off the boat and kind of their downtown scene is pretty nice. And then I know just off the cuff, I know we, this little lot in the corner there is town property.
Yes, they, I I did see the town property and and we we drove through it on the golf cart.
Okay.
Yes.
I know it's not part of our deal, per se, but I don't know if having a conversation or maybe having some ideas if we, I mean, apparently, obviously, it's just sitting there now and doing nothing. But how that could potentially play in with the planning as maybe another alternative, like if we need golf cart parking or a dog park, I don't really know what it is going to be. Don't quote me on that. I'm just saying maybe that should be a part of the plan because the town does own it and it is on that corridor. So just something to think about as part of the town is really all.
Joe, how is that lot zoned? Residential, commercial?
Residential, yes.
It's it's residential. They they tried to rezone and I think they did half of it. I think they changed the future land. But they didn't change the actual zoning, I believe.
Who's they here? I mean.
Prior council. I wasn't involved, so.
They is us.
Yes.
Yes, you'd have to finish the process. If you go to commercial, you have to actually change it from residential to commercial. I think they just changed the first step.
Yeah. Well, we've had people interested in that lot that have come and presented ideas. Some of them have not been able to be done because of fire department regulations and other things. The fire department, that's going to be one of the problems with turning it into a commercial property. There's a fire truck has to actually be able to turn around and do their thing, which they can't do there. So it's a challenge with that one. So, but they have come to us and looked for, you know, other things to put in there.
Well, and weren't some of the neighbors, or maybe this is just chatter, but like very against some of the like commercial potential ideas that were being considered?
Yeah, it was going to be, they were just wanting office use. They were just exploring. And that got pretty much shut down because of the fire. Said you're not going to be able to do what they wanted to do, where they wanted to put the office and all that kind of stuff, so.
I think all of the above apply. I think I like a lot of your ideas, the North Park. I agree with you. It's a it's a gateway into the community. I still think it could serve some purpose for those for those people over there. I know it's limited on the size, but I think it could.
I think we could fit a foosball table in there.
Yeah.
No, I I mean, it could be sitting areas. There's there's even a possibility of having a little fishing component in there. I don't know if that's possible or that's too limited. Are we doing anything down the corridor or Forest Hill landscaping wise? Are we part of that or not part of that?
Was in the roadway?
Yes.
We, I did provide for an optional scope of work for the roadway. We have an FDOT, we have FDOT landscape architects that work directly in Cotler and Hearing offices. So we did provide that as an optional service. If there are things that you're looking to upgrade or to get an opinion on, there's, it's a pretty broad lump sum scope in there.
Yeah, I think part of the gateway is is that whole back corridor. It could do some work. You have to, you got, obviously, you got the railroad in there, which kind of it's not beautiful, not beautifies the thing, but we can work around that. Was there any, as far as crossing Forest Hill, is there any you would find like a paved roadway or a longer cross, cross and have a longer time to go across whether you're using a golf cart or you're walking. I don't know if we have any say in the matter with the team. Kind of difficult.
Yes. Yes, we can absolutely take a look at that just to see if there's any, even from something as simple as how do we improve the crosswalks to make them safer for pedestrians? Does it incorporate flashing lights? Just exploring all those options to provide you with what could be possible. But you're correct, FDOT can sometimes be a little bit difficult, but we luckily have those landscape architects in our office and they can give us straight feedback on what seems feasible or not.
And because you're, like, the majority of the parks are on, obviously, the south side of Forest Hill. So you got people living on the north that would obviously want to visit that. Back to Vice Mayor Maples' suggestion was that little park area on Wesley. I know they said in the past that they tried to tie in where that waterway is and like South Florida Water Management or Lake Worth Water Management was opposed to it. I don't know if that's something we can readdress and or thought maybe to have like a small walkway across you know, what's over the lakeside versus impeding on the waterway. If they don't want us to involve the waterway, but to have access from from the parks to that side. I don't know how they want to use that as far as the CRA is concerned. I'd like to see that more than just the parking area. I know that it could be used for overflow. If we can get access to that water side, that a that walkway could continue that little bridge for the younger kids to fish or to stand, you know, to have some kind of access to that water, even though it's a short span there. There's a lot of vegetation right now that's just overgrown, needs to take away, you know, to causing more work right now. But I think it could be beautified and be part of the whole park system. I don't know if I've had many conversations about a dog park. I don't know if that's feasible, if that's something what people want, but.
I love that idea.
They alluded to, I, not only do we have pedestrians walking, running and bicycling, there's a lot of people that walk their dogs, small dogs, big dogs. And I, you know, take my dogs no more else, but if I would have my park here, it's a place that you can, you know, dogs are meant to be free. Obviously, we have laws and we have to keep them on leashes to protect them and protect us. But if there's any room for that to be incorporated, obviously, I I'd like to, that's something I'd like to see. I'm all about the vegetation for to now protect the waterway because there's a lot of filtering plants and stuff like that. But we have beautiful birds, not only our logo bird, but we have the blue heron, the white heron, you have, you have the lunkens that are very, obviously, they can be very loud, but they're very unique to this area. Because we know only in South Florida don't have those that that species, but we have many other types. So I like to see them also protected, but also have a blend of the vegetation for the filtering of the water system. And I like the dock area, how we, you know, we're a golf cart community, but we're also a boating community. Now they come up with boats, but they can come up with kayaks and canoes and so people don't have boats, so. And the other thing, I don't know, we we've talked about it when you were had your presentation is preserving the history of Lake Clark Shores. So if you notice, there's a lot of stones around in both the parks. And I'm relatively new, I've only been here five years and I noticed them. But I think we could enhance them to not to preserve the history, but also to pass it on to the next generation. I don't, I'd like to learn about it, but the next generation, how they contributed to the town and how, you know, they made the community that we have, the what it is. So I like to see the history preserved somehow, you know, but obviously that'd be expensive. But I think that it's important that we continue that the history of the town to remember it. And, you know, we have a lot of, we have the demographics, a lot of demographics, but there's a lot of new families coming in, new kids coming in. So if we don't pass on that information, it's going to be lost. I don't know if it could be like a QR code as well, you know, a more digital enhance because people don't, you know.
There is, there is a local Palm Beach County Historical Society that might be able to support those efforts and and works on a lot of exhibits and public spaces.
And I'm not talking too much. This is my, this has been my passion to be here. If there's any kind of fitness element going to be incorporated. We have, we have a park now and it's antiquated, it's outdated, and there's always been talk that if people don't use it, well, I think it's it's the backwards. It's a dog, the tail wagging dog. It's that people don't use it because of it's antiquated. It's it's beyond time. I see, there's a few young people come in there and I think a lot more younger people would use it. And I know there's even, I don't know if we need to go down the road of handicap, but there's a lot of grants out there and you make the equipment is user-friendly. It's not only just built for the handicap, but it's built for everybody who's not handicapped. And there's a lot of brands out there that help you promote putting that equipment in. So that could be additional funding to as a resource. I don't know, is lighting included in? Are we including lighting in the?
Yeah, from a conceptual standpoint, but absolutely, if if there's a need to light certain areas of the park, all the park, we're we're open to feedback on that as well.
I think I talked to Joe many times about it, but I like the lighting. We don't like light pollution, but we obviously need security. A town, a downlight, so it's 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 it lights up the park or lights up where you're at, but it's not blinding the residents because there's some lighting there now that it's good. You don't, you want there to provide security, but you don't want to shine somebody's backyard either. So I like to see the town concept of, you know, the town type lighting, but with a downlight. As I said, this is my passion. I hope so. Hopefully, I didn't talk too much.
It's great feedback. Thank you.
I just have one thing to elaborate on that because I think she made a lot of really important points. It's very important to me and I know first and foremost, hearing from the residents and really getting, you know, their their feedback and how they want to use the space. Most of them have been here a lot longer than I have. But elaborating on the lighting, making sure these parks are safe for families, for all residents. But elaborating on the lighting, making sure these parks are safe for families, for all residents to use moving forward as we grow. And as we now are going to have a sign from 95 pointing out that we're here, like that's a really big focus. It's the number one reason I love living in Lake Clark Shores. I feel safer living here than I have anywhere else in this county and continuing to maintain this natural environment. Because I do think that's something that makes us, it's like ours here and we are tasked with protecting that and keeping that green space. One of the plans that was presented that I did not like had a massive structure at the water's edge, like blocking the view and to me taking away from that natural environment. So those would be, and I love that history comment that you made. Those would be like my top two is just this natural environment that we get to experience here as residents. Public safety being a part of that plan and then that historical element, which is to be celebrated.
Thank you.
I have one final thought. Councilman Maturio mentioned the view or two final thoughts. I grew up in Panama City Beach. When I was a kid, you could ride down Back Beach Road and see the ocean all the way down. I'm old now and now there's all hotels. You can't see the ocean at all and it's like awful. It's like, it's terrible. So I think I concur with being able to see the water. I think that's a value add. The other thing I wanted to say is that the North Park, that little sliver there, that was kind of a mystery when everyone presented last time. There was no real idea. It was kind of open. Like, hey, what do you guys think? It was, do you have any concept, any ideas yet around that North Park little sliver there? Because that's probably in my opinion, to figure out how to make that the most functional and usable with Forest Hill separating the two parks and it being just a small parcel. Like, how do we make that really, because it could really, it can go really well or it could just be bah.
Yeah.
It's going to be one or the other, really.
I think you asked me that question in the presentation and I was kind of, you know, it's a challenge to figure that out. But after that I've gone out there now and walking with staff out there, I have a couple of observations. I did notice that there were, there was a community homes directly adjacent to it. And perhaps maybe that becomes an amenity for those particular neighborhood that lives there and that's easily walkable, whether it becomes somewhat of a seating area. Or I'm not sure exactly what that program element is, but I know that there's an opportunity with the proximity of the neighborhood. However, there is a, a challenge with how close it is to Forest Hill Boulevard due to, of course, the vehicle speeds and the noise and the visual aspect of it. But then if you keep walking out east, you get to the waterfront and you have that little sliver of waterfront. So I think our team can come up with a couple of just out of the box creative ideas, but I do see the constraints, but there are opportunities there too. And I'm excited to dig into it. So I don't have an exact answer right now, but going out there gave me a better perspective on the what could be done.
I'd love to see some kind of visual that your team can come up with and make that space. I think, I know that's the hardest part to try to figure out of this whole project. So I'd love to see what you guys come up next time we see you guys.
Absolutely.
Two quick more comments. You mentioned the noise. I could see some kind of vegetation to have noise throughout all the parks. Because I live on the lakeside and if you, if you just walk outside, you could hear Forest Hill Boulevard. I think like you said, we want to preserve the waterway, but we also want some privacy. And I had the conversation. Wanted to know, I mentioned to Joe, you notice Memorial Park and that sliver apart, there's two, there's a, there's poles and there's like a little, I like to see that kind of tied together. I like the star look of the site that's on Memorial Park. If you got the flag, you got the Lake Park Shores and you look at the walkway, it has almost like a inviting. If that could be somehow incorporated into the other side, because it's already got like a mini, that same concept is on the other side, that sliver of North Park. So if that somehow can be tied together, might be some type of concept that blended.
Speaking of the noise, Nicole, I would like the Pine Tree Park along Forest Hill has a, has a lot of foliage, a lot of hedge. I'd like to see that completed. So it's completely blocked off visually and it'll be a little bit of a noise, a noise buffer. And the other thing, Joe, you and I have talked about this. I don't think this is part of their purview, but that median that's on the other side of the C-51 canal, but before you get to I-95 is always so ratty looking. Is that, is that FDOT's responsibility? I, I would love to pay our public works, our new public works department to take care of that median. The grass is, is, the grass is too big tall.
If you wanted to elect to do that on your own, you could go in and.
Well, I would.
There's several streets in West Palm Beach where the neighbors have said, we're planting in there.
I would be one of Manic's best.
We didn't go that far, but there's right next to 95, basically.
Okay, okay.
If you're looking out of Pine Tree Park to the east.
We're really good into the nitty gritty here.
I know that one bothers me.
It doesn't, it bothers a lot of residents. Residents.
Bothering me.
But that's just, it's probably beyond the scope of what's going on here. And I think you were going to comment about the bushes. I know there's an area that, that needs that remain accessible.
The east end of Pine Tree Park isn't ours. It's South Florida Water Management.
Yeah, that's.
That, that opening in the rail or the.
Bushes.
Has to be there so that they can access the park and.
I know it's, there's a, working with Lake Worth, Lake Water Management access. I know that they were also, we were in discussions within, if and when, if this epic moves forward, that's where one of the conversations.
Correct. And I was provided a copy of that plan to just kind of see what that is. And so we have that in there too. And I did, I did see the access point as well that you pointed out.
Yeah, we showed her the access, the driveway.
Yeah.
You have to remember that that's their property. So everything you're doing, that's clearance.
Absolutely.
Do you mind having the ability to collaborate with, you know, we have a beautiful park and we have the wall that heavy fire protects us from. That's such an eyesore of, any ways to collaborate that may be made it through there to cover the wall, beautify and enhance the park and visual.
I'm glad you brought that up because I had it on my list to bring up as well. Actually, that was one of the questions and one of my first conversations with Joe and Emily was, hey, what are our options for that? And so we brought our FDOT landscape architect on the call because he deals with that all the time. And so we can definitely provide for some suggestions for it. It does get tricky with getting the green light to do something like that. And on top of that, getting access to maintain it. So really you want something that can be easily maintained, doesn't need a lot, but we hear you. We saw it. And we would love to provide feedback any way we can to help make that look a little bit nicer.
Powerful.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody's good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all your patience. You have anything left to add?
Absolutely. Yes. One last thing.
That's okay.
Next steps. So we took a lot of good notes on this and I just wanted to kind of understand timing, next steps, expectations from you as a CRA board. I was kind of thinking if you'd like, we can revise and update and create the survey with some of the questions that we feel like would be really important to be asked of the residents and provide, we can email a copy to you, Joe, and you can distribute it to the board and to get feedback on that. And then of course, any of these action items, like providing some ideas for North Park, providing some feedback about the wall. We can provide almost an email form too, because I know that costs and budgets, we want to try to be as effective as possible when working with you. So we can get a lot done through digital communication and of course McKenna and I are happy to come in anytime that we need to. In addition to that, one last thing I'll say is that I'm really happy to be working with Ingenuity Group from an engineering standpoint. They're going to be able to provide really great feedback to us and to you as well, related to anything for the slopes and the water areas and the ability to put in boat docks, access points. So we've got a really great team to kind of hit all sides of it and, and I think we can get it done. So I guess I'll leave it at that. It's sort of expectations on next steps.
Thank you.
I could.
Joe, you're up next, so we'll head to.
Just one little, one little comment. We don't know what the genesis of the rowboat or the row building was, but we agree with Taylor. Want to see some kind of building on the waterway. So we don't, maybe you guys know what the genesis of that was in the CRA.
Well, they talked about it and maybe if it blocks off that Lake Worth Drainage District and the South Florida Water Management District land, it's not a bad thing.
Okay. But the, the other thing that I thought was important is not, I, I know you guys are going to talk about recreational features and that's going to be important. But also I think is important, I think when you drive through there, I think you, you want to know that you're in a different place. You're in Lake Clark Shores now. So I think that's for staff and for me, I think that's important. So I want you to guys to think about, give them feedback. Do you think that's important? Because right now a lot of it's blocked off. So you can't really see in the parks. So do you want to see in there and block it off on the waterwayside? And to know where, you're in a different place. You're in a beautiful nature, Lake Clark Shores, very native spot.
What do you mean, take down the calusia that's in there and open up that park?
Yeah, that's.
Talk about opening up.
No, he's saying, and but put the.
Move it in.
The landscaping closer to water. So you can have, people can, you can, you're inviting that to that area. You're still creating a buffer, but you're not.
You're moving the buffer.
Yes. Still creating a buffer for the residents, but now you're opening up the park to say.
I'm not saying it's a great idea, but I'm just saying maybe they should look into it unless you don't like it.
Are we talking about Pine Tree Park?
Yes.
Do you know, Nicole, do you know what they're talking about there? Where all that.
Yeah, we, we, we talked about it. I, not only should you visit a park and enjoy a park, but also you should drive by it and say, wow, I'm in a different place.
That would make the park feel a lot smaller than if you.
That's their, that's their job to make it look beautiful, but.
In the questions you're asking, you're going to ask residents if they perceive the parks for their use or if they want like outside people using these parks, correct? That's part of this like survey process.
We're going to ask those. Yes.
I think that it really depends on how people perceive these parks being used because I have a very different, you know, viewpoint on.
And parking.
Accessibility to the parks and.
Right.
You know, I, I have a stronger sense of wanting to keep them ours. Like I like when you pull up to like the gated community and you know, yeah, you're in a different place and it looks beautiful in there, but.
She can't get in.
That's yours. And I know we're not gated, but I, I don't want like park free for all that like, you know, I don't like that idea.
I love the enclosed feeling of Pine Tree Park.
Okay, again, we're just bringing these, this discussion up.
And the enclosed feeling.
I think it really depends on how the residency.
And park, and parking, the element of parking.
I like that. There's already a berm there. So if you want to keep the pollution, that's fine. But I also want to enhance the natural trees there. There's a lot, listen, I love trees. I love the environment. But there's a lot of not natural trees in there that take away from the park. I had this conversation with many residents. It takes away from the beautification. So let's, let's focus and bring, enhance those trees that need to be there. There's a lot of palm trees and coconut trees that I think people had good intentions. But palm trees aren't meant to be in that park, especially in a residential close to a major highway and the maintenance of them. To me, it takes away from the beautification of a park, including our park, whether we do the buffer on the street side or we do some kind of minimalistic type landscaping on the waterway side. You know, I know the more of the street side is more for the traffic buffering. You already got a berm. So maybe trim down those trees. Because I know, I like the high, I walk that park all the time. That's my, was my park until the bridge came. When the bridge gets completed, I'll be back there, but I love the park. So again, I guess listen to residents, whatever the residents decide that they want. But I think part of it was having created some kind of sound buffer, but I don't know how enclosed you want it.
I'll just share something really cool that we did on a recent project. We're working with Quail Ridge Country Club. And we, we worked with them to renovate both of their golf courses, but we're just finishing the North Course, which is going to be opened in two days. When we first went out there, they had a lot of exotic vegetation, non-native vegetation, and there were iguanas everywhere, everywhere you went, iguanas. And we took all those out and we have a very native South Florida plant palette. And it has since attracted the native wildlife back to these areas. And I'll tell you, I haven't seen one iguana out there now because you're getting that native habitat back. And it was, it was like one of the coolest things to like see that transformation. So when I went out to see these parks, I, I had that in my mind. Like if we could, we could tweak some of these things, we're still providing a plant palette that provides for a branding opportunity, a sense of arrival, you've arrived here. But at the same time, being sensitive to what the native ecology is to bring those native species back. Because I saw a bunch of iguanas out there and I know it's difficult with the water. They love the water, but perhaps it might kind of help bring those species back in to help combat that.
No one will miss the iguanas.
I thought so.
Good.
That's it.
You ladies are good? You're good?
Yes, anything on your end? Well, if, if you want, we can, we can reach back out to you, Joe, and kind of do next steps, follow up expectations if there's nothing else from the board.
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. Really appreciate it.
Travel home safely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from?
Yeah, one quick one. As we were talking, it occurred to me in terms of, not necessarily branding, but in terms of attracting businesses. Has, has anybody from the, the CRA met with Kelly Smallridge?
I meet with them on a quarterly basis. I usually deal with Sean under Kelly, but yes.
Okay. She's doing, you know, bang up job attracting.
She's in Wall Street South. That's her main.
Thank you.
Take care.
Night ladies. Taylor, got anything else?
No, I'm great. Thank you.
I've overshared tonight. Thank you.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We're adjourned. Thank you.